I was trying to hit it.
We're a minute early, but I think we start at six twenty-nine, so.
Everybody in.
Let's do our roll call. Um, Commissioner. Commissioner. I want to say it wrong all the time. Uh, Commissioner Francis Gavinsburg, Commissioner, um, White.
Right.
Commissioner, President Heck, and Commissioner Sterling. So, I guess I will open a public hearing for anything that is not on the agenda. Uh, so it's serving right now, just if anyone here for something that is not on the agenda today. No, but when it comes on the agendas, add our time to the chat, they'll open the agenda. Okay, having no one here for a public matter during the summer. All right, it's been a summer kickoff. Um, Commissioner Mattlock. Uh, next, so Commissioner Mattlock has told you this, and seeing what areas anyone here for public hearing is serving, not on the agenda, we'll close the public hearing. And move on to item number three, that is, sorry, the N B M C amendment.
Do you want minutes?
Just gonna, just gonna. I'm mentally present, apparently. Um, this is why I get her going on vacation with family too much. Item number two, uh, is due for both minutes from June fifth twenty-two. Is there any amendments that are being from commissioners for? But on here.
All right.
And the most. Now, as a bunch of you, item number three, all day, the only N B M C amendment, let's have a drink.
So, um, City of North Bend is proposing amendments to the municipal code section sixteen point one two point zero zero five and table twenty point zero one point zero zero four. These amendments are related to changing how we process mobile home parks. Um, and this changes it from going to a hearing examiner to being processed by the community development director. So we're going from a hearing to an administrative process. Um, this is being done under the, um, following the state recommendations to go through the project review process under S B fifty-two ninety. And so you'll see in there all of the, the changes to the chart, which again changes it from to a staff decision, um, and whatnot. It's a pretty simple, pretty small thing. Um, this is the only piece of S B fifty-two ninety that comes with planning commission, although there are other pieces that will go to the city council. Um, because their budget and other things related changes are N B fifty-two ninety. But it's really a very small change to, um, make this kind of a faster process, but cleans it up. Uh, goes with state recommendations, um, and packages for some requirements that'll start next year. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know really how to explain it any easier other than changing from hearing examiner to a stat development director decision.
I do have a question, and because I do not know the title of what the changes mean, not just this, but overall. We deleted a paragraph that says the examiner's decision shall be final and so forth, and that's deleted. What does that mean in terms of changing this to having the, um, other person take care of this mobile home development approval?
So it goes into, if you go to the chart that's on the next page, it kind of talks about what the appeal, it's still a court appeals. But it, it, it just instead of being a hearing examiner at C E D like some of the other processes where the decision body is the C E D.
Right, you say the H E isn't here examining.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that, because. I don't know. Thank you.
Do you have any other things that you have just questions within this set of group?
I mean, just a bit of a thing, uh, like a C, uh, section A, that may develop case on draw up.
Did you think of that reference there?
Yeah, um, one A paragraph, uh, or any much, second one since it's had certain power, then one or may help. That it, those carryover language from nineteen seventy.
Yeah, here's, if we don't like it, sort of creating straight or in. Uh, okay, uh, do other commissioners have questions? There's not a question at open public hearing at six thirty-five. Is anyone here to discuss this item? We do have one personal line that we showed. Is anyone here for this item? Okay, there might be someone online, so we'll check that. And is there online?
Go ahead, Michael Thomas.
Sure, uh, given planning commission, Michael Thomas, uh, twelve thirty-one, La Forest Drive, S E. I'm sorry, wasn't able to send a comment on this item. My focus is on a different item today. But I am concerned, um, and really opposed the change to eliminate the, um, hearing examiner review. Um, seems to me that it was possible to create and skirt many development regulations, such as the creation of housings or other buildings, not just, you know, mobile homes, you know, more spots or utilities for these. I understand perhaps wanting to streamline and reduce permitting and review costs. But I view that the loss of this, um, hearing, the, uh, public hearing and hearing examiner review, uh, really deprives the public of notice of changes to this. And that's my gist of why I, why I think it's imprudent to remove, remove the requirement for, for a hearing examination and a review. This includes my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and any other comments for a public hearing that are online or in public in person? Being that we're closed to public hearing at six thirty-six, um, just I want to address any of these comments before we actually talk.
We're happy to. It would still be subject to C P A, if it is subject to C P A, whether it went to the hearing examiner or not, so that would still have public comment period. It would also still have been notice of the state environmental protection net, so the environmental requirement that does have a common period. Um, again, it would be subject to that, those, that's not changing whether it would have that or not. Um, and then the notice of application process wouldn't change, and that goes out for people's comments still. It just wouldn't have the public hearing, but so people would still be able to be noticed and be told. It would just be a different process.
Commissioners, um, so discussions. I think, you know, for me, I feel pretty comfortable with this because, because it really isn't changing the true process of it. There, there's still requirements through the whole process. I don't, I don't really feel from my perspective that anybody's going to get away with a whole bunch of stuff by changing this, so I feel comfortable with the changes that staff has made. I think it seems like a good time to update the process. Any other others? Oh, I agree. I can go and make that motion. Uh, I would like to make a motion to recommend this, recommend the article suitable of the proposed amendment on nineteen ten, the N C section sixteen point twelve point zero zero five, plans cooperation and filing in tables one point zero one point zero zero four, starting with the development term of end. Second.
With the amendments that were recommended?
We've intended to debate in there. Thank you, yes, so the amendments that were. And on the paper. So exactly what she agrees. And number two, item number four, it's now official without this corporate, we thought. Let's stop the giving class.
Great, well, good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is James Anderson, economic manager for City of North Bend. So great to see you all this way. Uh, so staff was approached on the Seattle local corporation about three, four weeks ago about proposed developments uh, on the parcel that's located here, uh, about thirty-five acres. It's basically just a little bit north of Travel Center of America. Large empty vacant property there, uh, for potential development. Uh, as part of their, uh, reach out to staff, they wanted to, uh, discuss with us the possibility of entering into a development here for the property, uh, to help them close out the property for future development. So the following, uh, items were requested in the D A, uh, and the first two impact fee reduction and impact fee, uh, credit offset are kind of, uh, essentially linked. But the impact fee reduction, uh, the request was to reduce the impact fees for transportation and stormwater by about fifty percent, uh, for a period of fifty years. Sorry, five years, fifty percent for five years. And then to offset, uh, the remaining credits, uh, with sales tax generated from businesses locating and relocating the, uh, property for a period of about ten years, commencing from the effective date of the D A. Uh, those are the two related ones there. And then the final one is water service to the property. So, uh, again, the developer is asking that we essentially, the state of North Bend, uh, basically abstain from uh, petitioning against them, potentially joining Slough Water District, uh, for the development of that property. Uh, this part, this idea would go, uh, would basically be a agreement between the City of North Bend and Middleport Property Development, that will see. And so we're really consider, uh, I should be supportive of this agreement and recommendation.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, are there any, uh, questions?
I feel like this is just lagging information about what's potentially built there and developing, so I just off the bat, not very, not very inclined to, uh, just because I just, I feel like I don't know information.
Yeah.
Um, so that's kind of my feeling about the thing. Know why they never mentioned, or at least they put out one of what they intend to build within, transportation tax liking, uh, all this sort of thing.
Yeah, so that was discussed, uh, with the applicant. Uh, basically there is a overlay for that property out there, the, uh, northeast, sort of east of Bend, uh, all over the district there. And so we did discuss that, um, what the agreement was, uh, that we talked about with that was to basically see if we're going to give the approval to the city council. And then they were proposing overlay master plan for that area that we had to talk about, you know, transportation effects there. Roads into the site of the, uses as well. Um, even decided some E P two, so there are, are, uh, uses for that property, which include manufacturing, fabrication, industrial and commercial options as well. So that's the type of uses for the uniform. But we did talk about submitting a master plan, which is part of the process for them to develop the site, uh, after he.
And, um, and, um, I'm, uh, new to the commission, you know, as of this year, so I don't have experience with this. But is this the normal process where, uh, developers apply for a development agreement and then say, oh yeah, then we'll show the city and, uh, town with the rest of the stuff again?
For any stuff.
Yes, I think it's a normal process, or is this unusual?
So it's, this one's a little bit different in the fact that it's in order to close on the property, they needed some guarantees. So they, it, um, they, to, to make the, the project pencil, the finances needed to work. And so they're needing to see if they can do that. And in exchange, they're promising to bring more sales tax friendly businesses. So, but, but the D A does not include anything, usually D As, when you see D As in the past, they're related to exemptions to the development design or to height. So therefore you would need to see the project, because how are you going to give a height exemption if you don't know what the project looks like? This is not, none of the asks are related to design, are related to the layout, are related to any of that. It's only to the financing and making the financing work. So that's the only reason staff is even putting it to you is because none of the asks are related to what that master plan is going to look like. That still has to come through. It still has to meet our code. It still has to do all of that. They're just saying, hey, we can't make this pencil with your impact fees. We promised to bring sales tax revenue within the first five years to make up that difference, and if we don't, we'll then still pay you the difference. If you can give us that development group, then we can close on the property and move forward with, with the project and bring that through the whole process again.
Is there any liability or exposure for the city if they come with a master plan, the city goes, this won't work at all? Like, we, we can't allow them to do what they want to do. Can they say, well, you gave us the approval to do something? Is there any liability for us if we have to reject what they want?
Their master plan still has to meet our.
Okay, so if they did come up with something that says, I want to put in a, a fourteen-story building all across it.
No, there's no obligation for.
I'm sorry, it's high level. I want to hear that way of saying that.
There's no obligation to approve anything outside of what our current requirements for the E P zone allow. If they come with a master plan that meets all of the E P two requirements, then we're obligated to approve it, just like we would for any other development in the E P zone without a master plan. But if they are trying to do anything above and beyond the E P zone, then it goes through the process to council, and there's no obligation to approve it.
So.
Oh, um, I was trying to figure, or finding some emails, but, um, everything was successful. But I swear this property was talked about and asked me as possibly the result to a different type of zone. Uh, is that, am I mistaken about that? Like, it was their recommendation that at the end of the year that they were going to bring to council to change it from to, to, you know,
This one?
Like the auto residential, not, not this one?
No, okay.
Did we come up with any reasons why we would not want to approve this? Like, is there any cons against this? Or is it?
For the development?
Yeah, yeah.
We have this, we have this quick question.
See, you have this, you have this session.
Okay.
This is your clarifying question.
All right, yeah, that's what I'm asking. I just need to find this out.
Yeah.
So, and to be clear, development agreement doesn't run with the land, so even if there was legal change or whatever building went in, you know, it's just the impact fees that are running with the land. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's off the tab.
And they say it, yeah. Why the rest of the impact things might be breaking processes, so.
Correct. And then I was a little confused on, um, okay, on the timing. So, within five years, so fifty percent reductions, and then, but then there's the ten years, um, after sales taxes, like, okay, so it cut, if it's cut off after five years and then they pay whatever the sales tax didn't, uh, cover, but then it says a period of ten years and then, and then this agreement is good until twenty forty-four? Is that right?
So the idea is, it's a big site. We don't expect it to all be building permits in the same year. They could be phased, so we wanted to make sure the development agreement lasted from the first building to the last building, so that's why.
Okay.
The time difference for, we want five years for each permit.
Okay.
So, because they'll pay fifty percent of their impact fees at the time of each building permit, so that's why the timeframe on the law, but you would probably have to explain more of the offset.
Yeah, the offset would basically be, uh, paid back through sales tax to the city on a development or, you know, building or structure to the site. And then if it was not, if, if the gap between the impact fee and sales tax is not a, the impact and city is not equal, then the co- the corporation would pay the remainder or full amount.
I wonder if this.
And it's not to be. Um, with that, if.
I think the ten in the rectangle, I think it's supposed to be five. I think there must be five and five.
Okay.
On six and, six and seven are supposed to be five.
But I forgot, my, my brain around it, if it's like, okay, after five years and then another development comes in and we just, but.
Yeah, but, and, and. Yeah, it is a time, it's five years, sorry, a period of five years.
That makes sense.
Right, they have to come up with a new plan.
Good thing.
Well, this.
Next month, they have to submit a mountain.
Right, and they have to have something built or done to coordinate master plan by the end of this twenty-year period, is that correct? Say on.
They, within the twenty years period, they will no longer get the impact fee discount if they don't or finish building. That doesn't mean that they've.
Finished.
They don't have to finish, no, or permit start, because you pay your impact fees at the time of permit issuance. So they would no longer, like, when the D A expires, they would no longer get the benefit if the D A, even if they're not started or finished building. If that makes sense.
Um, who's going back to the reverse, uh, I mean, that's middle for property, property development, how C dissolves before, um, proof that money is there waited in it, or is it?
Or sell.
It runs along.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's where we come into, we're looking at this as a land use application too. The city council will get into more money, more than we get into, but from the land use perspective, everything about that. Um, do, are there any comments for staff? Um, if, if, if a property gets split up and half of it gets a whole, has, and it's, when it becomes a multiple properties, it's still the land, so then everyone involved still gets this discount.
Correct.
So potentially with D A makes this property worth a little bit more than it's worth right now.
Current.
Okay. And they have something that they are going to submit within six months, but we are, we're not right now. Are there questions somewhere in here?
Uh, yeah, I was curious about the verbiage, or negative comments. Very slow, slow service. Uh, is that also a normal thing to sort of commit? We're currently, the, what is it? What constitutes a negative comment, uh, sort of my concern with that?
Yeah, negative comment thing. We're currently decided is, is under the service of, of City of North Bend for water, for ready services. So the applicant is just wanting to have the option, basically initially, having the service from SLA, so they don't want us to sort of stand in the way of that application.
So if someone said, I'm disappointed that they're using SLA, why would that be a negative comment?
No, no, it's, the city won't object to their, their application, or the, the attorney, the attorney wanted this way.
No, no. City. Attorney.
The attorney wanted this way, the, the, the wording was the city won't object to their reapplying for service with SLA.
Yeah, me and city staff, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else could have that, the city will not.
No, no. Negative comments.
Do we know how SLA feels about this? Are they prepared to serve if they're asked to, you know?
But it, it leaves it open either way. They can stay with us for a bit as well.
Yes.
You just give them.
Yeah, give them the option, exactly.
Okay, let's open the public hearing, we can discuss more after. So, at six fifty-two, we'll open the hearing to those present first.
I have a couple of questions, and thank you. Um, could you identify yourself please? My name is Sarah, and she's about one hundred and four six, two two six, South East one thirty-nine, I don't know. Um, this gentleman in a red shirt, I'm going to have to follow this expression you got, what is this agreement? There are not many specifics, and you guys know what a pig in a pub is? Maybe you knew that, you don't. A pig in a pub is something that's totally undisclosed, that you buy, you buy a pig, but you don't know what's in the pub. So, this to me, from my southern culture, feels a lot like a pig in a pub. Um, the, the city of Issaquah ha- has a pretty nice model development agreement that has a great description. It's very cursory, it's top line, it's about, you know, this, these were the kind of businesses we're thinking of, and here's this word verbiage, and we're expecting this kind of demand, and I sent you guys an email with a link to that, uh, description. Uh, also, my prior experience with North Bend, uh, regarding the sheltered holdings property was quite different. Early on, I submitted a very, very detailed, uh, master plan. And therefore, we knew what we were getting, or what we were going with it. And I don't know why or how the process has changed since then. I actually do know a little bit about that, but it doesn't seem like appropriate change to me. Also, this agreement goes through twenty forty-four. Does that mean that this entity that takes over, uh, would have the ability to hold that property from other developers, let's say someone else is going to take with a great idea that you guys fall in love with, and the city council falls in love with? Would you not then be able to pursue that or develop an agreement and be held by this organization through twenty forty-four? And I'm confused about the taxes, but don't look at that, taxes confuse me. Um, but would not we get those taxes anyway? And it sounds like if you've got a business, they're going to be paying taxes, the city and the county are going to be paying those taxes, so I'd see what we gain there, but to just be, couldn't mind eye everything. Um, so, and I don't really have a care, uh, concern about this developer, um, having paper to take to the bank. That's not the city's responsibility. That's the developer's business. And I agree, if we give them this developer agreement, that increases their leverage, that increases the value of that property. Now, why should we do that? I know that with sheltered holdings, I believe, all their financing was done independent of the city. Now, they got some sweetheart deals on sewer and some other things, but it wasn't like this. So, I would hope that you guys would table this for a while, until you know more about it, uh, more about the risks and rewards, and I think that's really all I have to say. If you would take a look at that email I sent you, I think you would really like the Issaquah, uh, shelter, uh, shelter holdings again, development agreement, uh, which is very detailed. And I also have other ideas about that, um, plan that I sent to you things, uh, a few months back, we came over to the house to chat. Um, there is some excitement in our little river, River River, about developing that land into a winter climbing wall sports concept that requires low water and low electricity. And I sent that detail along with my email to you guys, just to show you, hey, this is not what we have to do. You know, they tried to sell us a shipping processing plant not long ago, and it's like, no, I don't think so. We don't want that. So, open your minds up. There are other opportunities, and let's not just jump at the first entity that, you know, knocks. Thank you. Thank you very much. And any more questions?
Yeah, I want to speak on it. Uh, my name is Rob Ali, and, uh, I am representative of Seattle Mission Development. President, uh, C Con. General contractor and developer in the Puget Sound area, been here since, uh, early seventies, and we've been involved in several projects, major projects in the city for decades, years. And, uh, we, um, originally developed the, uh, the, uh, Tarek facility in Puget Sound. We just, uh, in the process of permitting another forty-five thousand square foot building, um, which we are in negotiation for a tenant, right now we won't start construction until we actually have a tenant. We are a small developer. Uh, we are, most of the projects that we do, we own ourselves. Rent for long term, uh, like the, the Tarek facility. This property, uh, has been running out a long time, uh, for years, uh, to Puget Western, uh, buying. I've known the people of Puget Western for a lot of years, done business with them. And after the deal with Yarmouth, uh, fell through, uh, Puget Western, basically, it's all about Puget Sound Energy, wants to get out of the property totally. And this is our last part. And, uh, so they called me up and said, would you be interested in purchasing? So, we went up and contracted property, and we've been meeting with City of North Bend to figure out the best way to develop that property. And knowing that City of North Bend, great veteran community that needs, uh, tax revenues to support the city, and now it would be our goal to develop the property to generate, uh, taxes for the city. It's a big commitment, um, for my group to go just far to buy. It's a big commitment uh for my group to go this large project and so the focus project. Again, we're in. And uh these couple uh items are important for us just to give us a clear path. Uh, it really, it's not about financing, that's just making the economic development work. Uh, so we can bring good tenants. And we've talked to people. Uh, we don't, this has happened in a very short amount of time. We haven't had a chance to sit down and do a master plan. Uh, I'm aware of all the different plans that future western has done over the past. Twenty years, you know, that all the the stuff they've worked with the city on. And uh it's something that. We will, you know, work again with the city to make sure that. Our project is meeting these controls of the city. It's just, and basically, it's just these couple of things on this development agreement is just uh. It gives us confidence of going forward. Really, it's just a step in the right direction.
Thank you for the truth. I don't know, did they like us on charge of this application? And anybody online could tell us.
Evening planning commission, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, Mike Thomas again, twelve thirty one, the Forest Drive SE. I really want to echo, you know, some of the early comments made by uh planning commissioners. Um, I really struggle with this proposal and I see its current presentation is premature. It really lacks details around the magnitude of the development. Such as, you know, how much stormwater and traffic um mitigation would be needed. Um, there's a lot of unknowns around the city financing itself. Uh, to me, uh, the city has been flagging for months in multiple work studies and. And um even its annual meet, the city is flagging budgetary issues. Um, it's um unfortunately, the expenditure is outstripping its revenue growth. Um, there are concerns around the bond rating and you can find this in in the email that I sent to planning commission earlier today. Uh, I failed to see how um fifty percent reduction in stormwater and traffic impact fees uh helps with with this condition. Um, again, perhaps, you know, long term, you know, sales tax revenue uh would overcome, but the, you know, this is a, you have ten years to find that out. Uh, again, I'm also quite concerned around the impacts to stormwater and traffic. A lot of financial uncertainty. Um, how does the city fund this? Um, there are going to be finance carrying costs to the city and delay, which really impacts, you know, safety for stormwater. Um, there's a residential neighborhood uh north on SE one fortieth. And you know, those are impacts that that the city and its residents and nearby neighborhoods would have to live with. Um, I would be concerned under successors. Um, how does the city collect on payment should sales tax uh fall short? Um, insolvency of a future successor? Does the city suddenly have to assert um against um one of the successors uh that now needs to own this property? I mean, perhaps a performance bond would be would be a good assurance to add. Um, I was a little perturbed by the amendment language. Uh, I believe this has should be run through the the development agreement. Process again, it's not just simply the city and um and a developer agreeing, you know, there's a reason for, you know, for the development agreement process. And perhaps, you know, that's misunderstanding of that. Um, I personally was um interested in limiting the non-tax generating, sales tax uh generating uses of the of the property. And I'm glad to see that folks are moving away from the National Guard, uh VMC or readiness center, you know. There was no revenue for that in the city, at at least for the component that was the guard. Um, I think the city is going to want to encourage things that, you know, would would improve, you know, sales tax. But also surprised that, for example, BNO revenue, you know, wasn't wasn't included. So, you know, it's an interesting, interesting question here, because again, part of the development might be commercial or manufacturing. So it's kind of an interesting question as to that. Um, this this parcel also has a checkered history on water as the entire North Bend area does. Uh, the original parcel was actually removed by a by the UTRC uh from the Solaw service area and placed into the and ultimately. Uh, located in the city water service area. I find it ironic, um, yeah, you know, that it may be returned to Solaw provided, you know, it passes muster by, you know, by multiple agencies. I am concerned given the state of the intertie upcoming water system plans that um limiting the city's ability to comment. Uh, on on water matters, um, it may not be prudent. Um, we've yet to see really any details on the operation of intertie and upcoming water system plans really um. Really to me strike as maybe this is too limiting. However, um, I feel the that it's possible for uh this parcel to be removed from the city water service area really without. You know, this agreement based on past history. Finally, um, one of the interesting things I've noting is the city proposes this tax increment funding as its lead option. Uh, both in the six twenty five and seven twenty three council work study packets. Um, these are used for like public infrastructure, could be roads, could be sewer, could be stormwater. Um, it's not clear where the city is headed with this and is there any intersection with um this and reducing the stormwater charges? Or even traffic charges? Um, does this agreement limit the use of the TIF a- as a mechanism? And I would encourage folks to actually read these two packets. So um all in all, and in summary, I'm really fine struggling with, uh, there's really just not enough information. Uh, to really make a an informed judgment as to committing this DA. And for that reason, I really would uh recommend that that plan commission not approve as written. I would also recommend though that perhaps to bring the the DA or other terms similar back with a master plan or with, you know. Uh, a development proposal, including some sequencing and magnitude of, you know, the development and types of development considered would be quite welcome. Thank you, and this concludes my comment, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, unless there are any other comments, we'll close the vocabulary at seven one six and turn it back to the planning commission to discuss. Um, I guess first, um, before we start discussing, does that want to address anything that the public. Uh, mentioned in their comments?
We'll leave it to you to ask any specific questions from the amount of comments that you can receive.
Right. Okay. Um, I think first, I mean, I, we talked about this a little earlier. Um, development agreements do the land, and so our job as the planning commission is to make land use decisions. So when, and I am not one that loves development agreement, I threw it down. Um, because they are, they're different from our regular code. Um, and I I don't like the legal requirement, but that's that's my own preference. For looking at looking at this in a land use perspective, in in my mind, it doesn't seem to affect the land use. As much as as a building being built that's oversized or as, you know, different architectural. Components that we might look at or, you know, connectivity to trails or things like that. Uh, the impact fees, where they will get paid back, it's just a lead. From my perspective, I don't see it as a huge land use issue, but maybe other.
I don't feel differently about that. Yes, but I do, I do agree with many comments that were said that Felix was, it's just a very. I can draw on agreement and I and I appreciate it sounds like the the rush to acquire this parcel. Uh, kind of put this bait, uh this bear bones uh document together, but I almost certainly know that there's a closing jury. Yeah, like.
That was for you to add.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's fine, so.
It it is yeah, okay, so you're in.
Yeah.
I don't see it, but I.
Yeah, so and the reason it is going to rush and stuff because we have, we have to close on this property in a very short enough time.
What is it on to you?
That's November.
Okay.
Okay, so to get a uh development agreement, I mean, I mean, a master plan done is impossible. Just not possible. We are already working on it. And we will continue to work with the city, but these are just uh. Just to make it so we can close on the property.
Do you have any idea about what you were? You were planning to, you have any idea that you can give us, just like, yeah, oh, we can do this or do that, can you just give us? A little bit more information?
Sure, sure. So again, uh, there's certain type of of uh. People we want on site, but we do not want warehouse, doesn't go inside yet. Maybe a developer would do it easy, but you know, it's not what we're we're geared towards. We want to, you know, let's say it's a um. An answer, you know, let's say it's a Honda Kubota or something like that at the ownership. You know, services they are, uh, as an example. Uh, uh, something that's gonna have point of sale, manufacturing has point of sale. Things like that.
Yeah.
So again, we understand talking to the city staff that uh the real goal here is to bring in tenants that are going to generate revenue. For the city and that that's our goal. And uh, once we close on the property, you know. We don't like, you know, we'll move it along as fast as we can. And again, as far as what that's going to look like, it will be, you know, there's already been. Uh, a lot of geo tag traffic studies, all that on the on the site for a lot of years. Uh, and there's been drawing into master plans done, but really the things that have done previously. And there's some basic stuff there for how that's going to fit, it's really going to fit in to uh some key, you know, how we lay it out for for key.
Yeah, um, I appreciate that. Thank you for your comments. Uh, I thirdly, there's just. It's a, it's a very exciting place to have some developing going on, but I do agree and I um and. Jinky, I love the example from his very nicely summarized and it was just like an overview of the developer and the city type recount of what that is to. Trying to think that is where city staff and the development. To kind of get to, obviously we'll get to that after, but I I think uh just some. Basic overview detailed in this, I think could be very helpful for me now.
You know, I can do that all, but of course, I I'm exposed to them.
Yeah, okay, so so.
Well, we have the one, I'm sorry, we can't open the public area again, you already listed. Um, because you're the applicant, that's why he can't speak. Um, commissioners, do you have other comments?
Overlay is what's under control of bill, this is control of it. So basically, anything that's within that code is what could possibly be developed. And so the property can't choose to directly off whatever property is the code. Beyond that, the city really can't advise or direct to the city to have this kind of business versus this kind of, is that correct?
So the overlay gives flexibility, so the the. The one of the reasons the DA can be bare bones is through the overlay process, there's flexibility built in. With approval of an overlay of a master plan, it's not possible, so.
That's a public process.
It has its own public process to go through, to go to go through the master plan. It can go beyond what the EP zone, the bare bones is the EP underlying zone.
That's great.
They can go directly with what the EP uses are, what the EP setbacks are, with the all the, without pretend there was no overlay. They can develop it as EP without a standard public process. If they go anything beyond that, they wouldn't really need a DA because they have the master plan process, which has. The flexibility built in to the master plan through a public process to the council for approval.
Thank you. And I think it is helpful. Yeah, it is helpful to understand that aspect too, where it doesn't matter what project comes in for DA. I mean, anybody can give us renderings and that's helpful. We're like, okay, we like that, we don't like that, but it doesn't matter because the DA owns the land. So they can completely change and this still sticks with property. So so the renderings are nice because we have more information, but it doesn't.
And I like the point that you made that it would be called process all along. As part of this development. So that's a chance to publicly put this work, city council.
Yes.
I mean, I like seeing something with this this parcel, I think it is very exciting, very exciting to see. So what that could possibly be, wrote um wrote in a a whole master plan. Uh, yeah, I think it's, I think it's it's a little, I don't want to say risky because it's not necessarily risky if you put it in the context of what we just discussed, but. Uh, it is, that's, that's okay.
Uh, so I think one we sort of. Um, I my my record on being against DA is already published. Uh, but uh what I want to just clarify is a couple of clarifying things. Um, point one of the intact two reductions, that's just a straight fifty percent reduction of the impact fees. We're pushing the rest of the fifty percent. Offset with sales tax. Is it correct that the sales tax would have been paid anyway? We would be getting a sales tax revenue with building anyway?
We would, yeah, if any sort of ability goes into the site, we would be uh receiving sales tax.
Okay. So we're just offsetting that cost with a guarantee to be sold, to be treated up and needed.
Right.
Yes, it encourages them to, because it's an EG zone, it is an industrial zone. It encourages them not to put warehouses and to put more sales tax based usage of this stuff. Because then they would, it would be offset by the sales tax revenue generated uses.
At the cost of fifty percent reduction, this rest.
Right.
And then the anti-snitch clause uh is interesting to me. Um, you've kind of mentioned it, but I want to clarify. If this wasn't part of that, they would be under city water.
Yeah.
Not have a choice as well.
Well, the site is currently served by the city department of waters. This just gives them the option to just stay with that, stay with us, or go to Solaw. Their needs and what it's all.
And to be clear, it is within our district, but we don't have water to the site yet. So there is a, there's a very high cost to get water to the site at the site for both.
For the city. Because the the water.
Okay.
Yeah, the current water line is about a mile or so away from the site. And so we have to move, we have to build a lot of water to the side of it, so.
Is there any issues on the city's part to be able to get water to us? Any fault, any reason that this would be just not just cost.
Basically, yeah.
And that comes to you from a developer?
That is the normal process.
Okay.
I feel like we're leaving a lot of money on the table.
We're sorry, I said.
Oh, I I'm sorry, but I feel like we as a city are leaving a lot of money on the table, TA. We're giving a fifty percent reduction in this water and transportation fee. We're going to get paid in sales tax, so we already get sales tax, correct? It does encourage them to actually like business, they know that will give sales tax revenue. Um, and if, are they obviously wanting, potentially wanting. Potentially go with Solaw versus North Bend because it will always let them go with a better deal. So I just feel like if we do give the fifty percent and if they do go out, it's just a lot of money for the city and it's gonna. Miss out. And it's not like there's this amazing master plan, we're like, yeah, you know, it sucks, but it's beautiful, we love this, whatever, even. I know it's just land use, but I'm just thinking. A little bit further. I I don't love it and I love DA, I I like to be saying, I would.
But if I could say something to that point, so uh with the gentleman, Lindsay, Michael Thomas, talk about uh fiscal uh impact analysis that the city has been doing. We've been working on that since around March of this year. And a part of the fiscal sustainability analysis analysis was really to look at economic development opportunities that could help true up this new project over the water. So we need both current obligations, but also future obligations, whether debt obligations or just teaching public service uh just down the road. It's one of the uh, if that analysis identifies a couple of key uh properties, one is on the west side of the city and the other is this. And so this one under a scenario of full buildout under EP two. Was expected to add, basically increase the asset value of the site from six million, which is where it currently is now. To about seventy four million dollars, increase six hundred jobs. So in economic development, that's great because you increase the asset value of the site full buildout. But the real key to economic development is what happens after that, so the economic, global economic impact. So if you can create six hundred jobs, those are six hundred people buying, you know, hamburgers at local dairy trees. They're buying uh things today's harbor, they're having an economic impact throughout the whole community basically. So while we're basically spending some money upfront to. To get this development in in the long term, the economic impact will far outweigh that fifty fifty percent of the impact fee that will defer right into the sales tax.
Right, this this section six and seven are basically saying that zero, we're gonna. Let money stay on the table, so to speak. But when we get it back by the end of the agreement, either because of the sales tax increase or the owner will will true it. So there's, in my understanding, that's not an overall cost. We're shifting it to the back end, but what you are saying then is because this is an economic development that's instead of creating jobs. Which have multiple multiple offsets from that, because jobs create jobs, so money creates money. So in that, there is, is highly, highly beneficial to the city's finances and economic stability.
Yeah, it's it's a multiplier effect from the dog creation and.
I can put my whole time with the play, because you're having. Uh, this lot, a little bit others, and the empty lots. You're gonna see DA for this, this isn't for this. Our, and I would, we take my turn now, they're saying, we should kind of have much competition about our impact fees in general. I'd love to see that come to us.
We have contract for impact fees today, so I have right now.
Okay, that that I would like to have a secret DA, we have some kind of reduction, we need to reduce outside of DA. For commercial development, I mean, the city wants to bring in. Um, I, you're gonna see this again, like if 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 you if. You say no to this, or the council says no to this. Uh, it'll be another developer, then again with a larger plan. It'll come back and they'll want those impact fees reduced until, until the impact fees are back down. Uh, well, even then, because they're all they're all. Um, so and personally, I'm not, that's the, I call the research clause, but I like the option, giving to developers. The option between this law and city versus the just being one. Um, I, I'm like, I agree with Kishan White about. Uh, the verbiage is a little weird, uh, and and I don't like the idea that. Uh, we need to say, we need to have a clause in here that says that you know, grab on or something, or it is, or give the option. But uh, I guess I I I wanted that that you're getting the option.
I do like that part, I think that you should have the option. I've never seen a DA like this. Where it's just a blank slate. It's usually, hey, this is what we wanted to do, a little bit outside of what the village or what. But this is what we're gonna do if you allow this, we we don't know.
So to the point that does come back to, right?
Right, and we will on the back end get it back, come back, activate. And I personally have no problem, like discounting uh like impact fee, I think that. That is not, it's not really an issue for me. To bring in good businesses, to bring in amenity, to bring in resources that we want in this town. What thoughts, you sure that look, it looks like.
I haven't thought about that, I'm not thinking about this now, so one of the realities of, you know, kind of the impact fees that they involve. When they're needed, the city will have possible gap in finances. Michael Thomas was, I heard you correctly, alluding to, so. I'm expecting that that was part of the plan here to say, because of the this dip in expected revenue. But the deal will offset later on, that it's not going to affect, material effect the operations of the city's budget. Is that being accounted for?
Have you, have you run sort of the.
Yeah, like what happens if we give this development and we're only gonna get fifty percent of the impact fees that we would expect from this, is it going to. We're gonna have costs, we're gonna have to delay things, or.
Can I ask a question on top of that, we wish we could answer. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, well, actually. Tell me what the, how this actually works. We might anticipating impact fees in terms of how we do our finances until development comes on. Right, so okay, it's not one of the.
Okay. It's not in the prediction model, it is.
But it's, no, that's that's that.
It's been a lot of, for a heap of the goldies, you're committing everything, yeah, just starts with, what do you have, is there what you have?
Right, that's. I'm just saying, they, we don't have a roses scenario saying, hey, we we got five thousand dollars extra.
But when we do, we'll be offset by five years, no, it is DA is in place, so once we have.
Right.
That expectation will. It'll be built in, because the DA would be in place.
Right, thank you, I appreciate that, thanks for teaching.
I, yeah, no, I was gonna say, I I'll say, I mean, I trust our, our whole process. I mean. I don't know my thoughts, but I think it is, I think that is worth wanting to support.
Commissioners, what if this property been empty for as long as I know, would have been. Is it, had, have the impact fee been a big setback in people's developing, has anyone come to the city and. Just can't afford to, or why, why is it still so empty? No reason.
Well, I mean, it's been for for a number of years, you know, it was the Patriot Western was trying to make a deal with the Army National Guards, it's right there. And so that was kind of locked in place, we remember the Army uh did a basically. And at that time, they communicated to us that they just couldn't move forward with the project. There's a variety of reasons behind that, some of it is federal state funding associated with the project, they just can't. Lock that in, uh largely because of world events, particularly in Europe, what's happening right now, this type of project is no longer a priority for the military, so. Based on that, they, it's definitely.
How long were we talking about?
Previously, I know that.
Five years, ten years? No, no, not that long, so still, my question might is for me, is like.
Well, I'm just as a hazard, yes, the size of the property, it's a really big bite to take, so. Without Patriot Western doing something to shortclap the property, put it in the smaller bite sized pieces, you're not very likely to get. Something out of, but yeah, largely.
That's had overlay for a while, so some of the cities have had a master planning. Kind of thing, so. I don't.
And why is that like uh so November? Why did that like point of purchase, this is November, February, because city needs of purchase?
Uh, yeah, also Patriot Western, Patriot Energy, it's on by. Company out of Australia, it's on, they have the boards that. They want to do a deal at the end of the year, I I've been dealing with that. That they organize, that organization for a long time. And they'll do a deal, that deal at the end of the year, then they, the deals get done in the year, they want to do, it just falls off the board's. Uh, radar totally, and will just splatter and sit there until the end of year, next year. Almost says, hey, we gotta do something on this property, and been through this before, and then, and uh. I don't know why, it's that way with Patriot Western, and if you decide to. Their parent company, it's just, that's the way they are. And brokers who have been involved with this property, Don Woody, he's been there for. But as long as I've been around here, just got forever surprised he hasn't retired in five years. Um, he's been trying to sell this property all along, you know, this this whole time, see if something. Just they just haven't been able to do it. That's why they, they have faith in us, in my deal. That's why they came to us, as opposed to putting down streets of their developers. That's, that's, that's why they contracted, they, it's. We love to have a normal purchase like this, we would, you know, push it out so that we had a master plan, we rent the city. More permits we can get going forward, that takes a risk away from us. Right now, we have. It's all risk, you know, um, that's okay, that's what kind of. Do we just develop a problem, but at the same time, that's why this kind of, it's really just a starting place. You got a lot of work to do to, to do a master plan in the next six months, it's gonna be, it's a big commitment on our part. Close on the property, then spend the money to get investment, it's not, not an expense.
Are there any house privileges or if not?
Uh, question, but I will. Actually to. Prove uh, it's out of control, push off.
Okay, we can put a second.
Sure.
Uh. Let's go around. I have a lot of examples.
I, I will, I.
Okay, uh, I'll go this way. First one. I don't know.
I'm on it.
We should wait. I mean, pretty given, made it, so. Uh, for sure, Teal, I will go five. And we're down to two more commissioners.
Alright.
And we should be. Okay, so we should carry this, and it will go to city council, and we will have another public hearing for. Um, for all the the development coming through. For the forward sense, we may really have said. All of it. Okay, we will look on to. Item.
Sorry, I say, we're here, I want to say thanks, staff, the city staff, all of our work, they've been getting this together. This has been a long process, and appreciate professionals. We have your pass, welcome. Well, thank you.
Uh, yeah, on to, I think number five. The N D and the C D amendments are accepted.
Let me start this one, it's the interview is Trevor LeSect, so. And so we have a very good interview. Trevor, the teacher student, first to Washington, thank you, student. And we have the pleasure of having Trevor uh with us for a month and a half now, as a volunteer intern. So Trevor is volunteering his time three days a week for the city of Michigan, helping us with a number of, it's all those. Some of the checklists need our comprehensive plan update. Um, he's also a number of tasks, uh but one of the primary tasks that he's done. Is work on these amendments to the statute law. So I am turning over to Trevor, uh this is great experience for Trevor, thinking about the potential planning career and all that the uh challenge is. Facing commissioners, oh, like, uh, Trevor, the interview's the amendments. You have some paper to read.
Um, so. Uh, these amendments are around by. Hospital thirteen thirty seven, that worked past last year, um, amending uh vice of Washington. And they are changing ways that local cities now can regulate our ADUs. Um, and they use our, it's just. Uh, and these were brought on because Washington State's currently experiencing a housing border crisis and. Uh, need, need for more housing for renters across the income spectrum. Uh, many cities uh dedicate a lot of their residential zone land to single family detached housing. Um, which is financially had reach for many people, many households. Um, and due to the small size, accessory volume, you can provide a more affordable housing option to those families. Um, and in the same sense. Uh, this is also to help correct uh her historical, um, and racial exclusion and single family zones. Um, it's uh also to help accommodate for. Years, grandparents, children, uh, families with disabilities, friends going through life transitions and family. Uh, these are all, by the way. Reasons of the state that's different, uh, and some, uh. In short, uh, just off the back, uh, but in the staff report, we have listed the major uh. Things that are coming through this house bill, that need to address, uh, and that's the need to increase the number of ADUs we allow from uh to two. Uh, we no longer are requiring the owner to occupy the property, uh, and we may not permit it to sell, I mean. Uh, we we must increase the per day our ADUs are fifty two minutes, eight hundred square feet, that is increased to one thousand. For the house will, um. Uh, we may not require provision of object parking for ADUs, then one half of them will be transcribed as, probably apply to work in, because we're pending. Uh, and we may not permit sale of the things, so basically. I'm gonna need to increase, you know, it's a little, it's a little. That is good.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I would just add that what the state legislature is. Expressing here as the needs of the state apply very much also within. Housing用地 creditations. This is an option that they have. That required by the state to increase housing alternatives, so these are excellent options for people that have grandparents, for people. Kids transitioning to adulthood, all sorts of different life circumstances, it provides a lot of possibility. So we believe these are good amendments that benefit more than, it's. Um, I want to hand around one additional amendment that is not in your packet, so. This is something that has come up, um, we realized that there's also a number of homes that are existing homes around the city. Um, in zones that allow residential, allow multi-family residential, but don't allow single family. And so without adding provisions here, that would enable them to have accessory going units, like all the other. But we would not be allowed to have that, because. And it's the way that the code is written, accessory going units are for single family homes, and a single family home that's permitted in the zone, then they accessory. So what you'll see in this package, in the uh second page, the highlighted text. What we provided is another provision that ADUs are permitted for existing family dwellings. Within zones allow, not allow residential uses, but don't allow a single family as a new use. So we're talking about existing home, and getting those residents, those single family homes, the same privilege that others. We we believe that is a good tool to add additional housing options within those. Um, together with this, if you guys support this amendment as well. We will bring some corresponding amendments to our non-conforming use regulations, so our non-conforming use regulations. Got our uses that are not permitted by the, essentially grandfather uses. Uh, there's provisions in those regulations that could be limiting to this allowance, because it, those, for example, limit. Uh, expansion of residential or just use. In no more than twenty percent of the business, so that provision could run into conflict with this providing cloud edition, such as well. So that is not part of tonight's kind of process of the hearing. That that is not a part of what's advertised for the hearing for your next meeting, which will be on these regulations. So we'll separately bring that to you, separately run its bonfire hearing. But it goes along with this, the provision to allow for accessory. So turn it over to you guys for questions, this is not a hearing tonight, so it'll be coming back.
If it is up to the chair, if you would like to hear from the public, we have a request to speak. But this is the public hearing, and then the next one, so it is completely up to you whether you'd like to hear from the public today or not.
Uh, I mean, I think right now we're gathering information, so it doesn't care to hear from public, they won't officially open. The hearing, so, good. We'll let them speak, and then we'll bring that to you. So.
I see.
The one, you're the one to speak.
Yes, go ahead, Michael Thomas?
Mike Thomas here, twelve thirty one, the forest, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hey, sorry, I had uh had to double unmute, um, uh, I wish to thank the chair for. Uh, for the good of the order to allow me to make two very brief uh comments, um. Um, when I read the draft regulation, I I was, something caught my eye about the twenty five foot um allowance. Uh, I'm concerned the way that is written, that might result in ADUs that are twenty five feet taller than the existing structure. And I don't believe that's, that was intended, so that was definitely um unclear to me. Unclear to me. Um, so you might want to look at that. Uh, it immediately struck me as. It's problematic with, you know, character of existing residential neighborhoods and, you know, you have houses that are approaching three story height. So, um, perhaps some other things that might stop, you know, stop an ADU, uh, in that scenario, but I was concerned about that. Uh, the second item, and, and by the way, I am, I'm very pro ADU. Uh, I believe it's a great way to create, um, housing. Uh, revenue for residents to, you know, offset their costs. How, you know, housing for seniors or, or other disabled people that might be members of their family, et cetera. Um, I am concerned though. About, um, nets, um, environmental and utility impacts. Uh, such as water and sewer and how those things are paid for. Um, you know, generally the existing structure will have, you know, a connection, a sewer or water connection. How is that incremental water and sewer? Planned for under ADUs and, and that is, that is a very big concern of mine. Again, I wish to thank the chair for allowing my brief comment and I will conclude. Thank you very much.
Uh, and while we're gathering information, if anyone can come up with it.
Just very briefly, I just want to say I totally agree with Michael Thomas that my concern is water, electricity. How that's going to impact, but I too am a fan of ADUs. But I think we need more questions answered before we can make this a term.
Alternative effective permission. Uh, any thoughts from commissioners?
A couple. Um, what is not clear to me is in, in that paragraph or section eight. Um, includes that includes designated manufactured homes. Uh, so I'm going to bring it up like including, but I'm going to do any bad homes as a whole. So what kind of building are you familiar with? But is there a limitation on what kind of structure we want to see? Is a mobile home on the way to the center block foundation considered a meal you? I mean, I don't know if your city code is that.
Yeah. So just a clarification, first of all, about what a designated manufacturer home is versus a manufactured. We have specific definitions in our code. And then designated manufactured homes, that which means state requirements, uh, that. Basically make it the same as a single family. So it can be a pre-manufactured home. But it's like, no, why it has to meet certain construction practices, whereas a manufactured home can be manufactured in fact nineteen seventy six. Doesn't need certain requirements for, for construction. Uh, so that's the differentiation. And as far as what accessory dwelling unit could be, it is possible that a, um, pre-manufactured home, a tiny home. Could be a accessory dwelling. If it meets these standards. It could. It would have to be an average standard foundation.
The other question we had was about access for fire and emergency services. Is that something that. That's just considered part of the code? You've learned enough now, or is there any extra thought we can give it to? Uh, ADUs or smaller and if they're interested in personal.
So they would still be something to review by ESO Fire Rescue is access requirements prior to those reach.
Uh, I love ADUs, uh, built to tomorrow, but, uh, but I, I hear too, uh, pushing the topic, but I agree that I. It's, uh, I'm missing a piece of promoting or ability to budgeting news as well as to purchasing, which is. Uh, sewer or something. And I know that House Bill did authorize municipalities to dictate what that looks like. There could be a city wide. Commanding that every new AD was on sewer or if you get the possibility of a second for sewer. I would like to understand where the cities can keep up on that, especially knowing that. Uh, you know, a lot of our city is on sewer, but when you look at where the sewer is located, it's in the higher density areas. Uh, and so you have sprung. Parcels, uh, and bigger lots that. Possibly, uh, would have the footprint you do to ADUs onsite, but they might have some big, and if you require sewer, that makes it. Completely out of portable and also the shoreline element. Uh, I know that there's. I'm not sure this is in the code. See, it's, it's not, but, uh, I think there's like also these subjects. Shoreline, maybe it's in future, maybe for now, but, um, a lot of our. City is shoreline. So, um, I love everything kind of like what we're.
So that's correct, that there is no new sewer, uh, in the city, except if you are beyond fifty feet.
Uh, and that will. Well, so you said, yeah, you're incorrect. Yeah, so I think so. And that will be, uh, you may change with. Or will they, will, will.
An ADU can use a sewer, a septic system of existing home if King County Health approves of that. If they have to do, it is under our sewer regulations. If the. Septic system need to be amended at all to accommodate that. That's what triggers sewer.
So if the current septic system is not big enough to accommodate an additional.
Yeah.
You are forced to go to.
Yeah, you could.
If it's with, if it's with a hundred and fifty, but if you're beyond one fifty, then you have.
Then you.
You could get a bigger septic. Okay.
We may need to look at that in the regulations. It talks about a single payment home. I know that that talks about adding additional ADUs. But that would be in our sewer regulations, not something.
Right here. Both of us have said so, but, uh, but okay, that would be, yeah, good, good to see. True sweet. But they're gonna be to yourself and.
So I, we also heard comments about concern about impact to city services. So. Um, I think probably in particular like water sewer systems. Um, we have the ability to assess impact fees on accessory dwellings. Um, the state amendments say you can charge up to fifty percent of the rate of a standard single family. Current city practice is you do not charge impact fees for ADUs in the context that they are accessory. It's a modern, it's not a whole. House into itself.
However, there are two conflicting legislations. Um, one is this legislation that says ADU shall be fifty percent. There's another legislation that came out that says we need to review our impact fees to scale impact fees based on house size. So we're looking at it to possibly adjust it based on square footage. So how can you have half ADU? If all of our fees are based on square footage. So. What we're trying to work on. We may no longer waive ADUs completely if we charge by the square foot. So everyone would pay an equal. Fair share based on a square foot. So everyone under a thousand square foot, whether it's an ADU or a house under a thousand square foot. Would all get the same thousand square foot. And that key. Someone at two thousand square foot house will pay two thousand and someone at a three thousand square foot house will pay three thousand square foot and that key. So we're looking at that as part of our impact fee study. If we could still waive ADUs, we don't know. That's all part of a study we're doing. But we have to require, we have to allow to ADU. So whatever that impact is, that's part of us. To ensure our systems can handle it, the state is requiring us to bring these amendments and allow to ADUs in our city. We don't really have a choice.
So the requirements, like a mandate, like if someone says they want two ADUs in my property, city can't say no and the neighborhood can't say no?
If they're.
If it can fit. On the property.
Right.
Then we can't, but if the neighborhood has a contract HOA prior to the state law, then they can't. Cause that's a private agreement prior to the state law. If the HOA is created after the state law, then they cannot prohibit it.
Okay. Okay, great. So I wanna, one thing I'd say is that certain things you do to your properties. Is your per person.
Correct.
So in this case, the neighborhood is not notified because it's, it's allowed, right?
Again, if the HOA.
Well, it's. It's.
It gets it.
I don't think there's an HOA, so I don't know if those are allowed.
Right. If there's no HOA, then they can't prohibit it. Correct.
I live in sewer, right? No, H four.
Yeah. So, so HOA legislation, they, they determined that HOAs are contracts between private properties. This contract law does not override. The regards, so they can still prohibit it in HOAs, but the city cannot.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I don't know a lot of stuff, so I have to answer questions.
Happy to answer.
And that's your day. I didn't. Give us here our statement.
The new amendments is a, is an option.
Just their media was right.
But correct. So the, the idea behind that is where we allow residential, it's usually higher, higher density residential. Where we don't allow single family, like the downtown commercial. So trying to encourage higher density. Why do we want to prohibit more units?
Yeah.
And a higher density. So that's not. A legislative requirement, it just needs common sense to allow it.
I would be giving the kids that we're hiring. Thank you, Trevor, for your part.
And you think too, like I support the use as well, um.
I mean, I'm sorry, to be clear, there are things like setbacks and things that are within our, if you, if you wanted to change. Those, those are within our purview to change. Those aren't state mandated, like setbacks and height and things like that. Those are things that we can decide separately, but. Allowing to ADUs, having to allow them either detached or attached, those are all required, kind of the things that are in the staff report. At a thousand square feet, all of those things we have to allow, uh, where, you know, we have to, we can no longer require the owner occupancy. Things like that, um, are all the changes that are stated, but there are things in here we wanted to. Change that are able to be changed.
Right.
To Mr. Thomas's point, I think what he's talking about is the, if we told by the.
Yeah.
We got the new structure.
Of the, of the.
If you're attached and, you know, if, if, if you're building.
Right. It's one of those things where you go put a park and you swap out the reason of people.
It's that will be the height, it's under the overall height of the requirement.
And I said the twenty five can do. And at first that made me pause if it's higher than the building in front. I think. I would love to see the language of the ADU needing the architectural nature of the primary home. So.
So it's not here, we have like, you know, our mental bystanders.
Okay.
There's a provision there that an ADU.
Very nice. Yeah. Okay. We didn't need that.
That's it. Because I'm like, I don't care if it's taller than I'm the ghost or I don't care if it's. A manufactured home, if that fits, but it just, it has to fit.
Um, a question on the sale of this condominiums. So currently. That is a state law.
That is a state law.
Well, like, so let's say someone decides to build two ADUs when they're personal, but it's still one personal.
Yes.
So in order to sell, they have to hit the city and.
Many minds.
Okay, so that's where the minimization will take place. Or could they do a short plot and then build their ADUs?
So usually short plot is individual lots. They cannot do that. They're only a lot.
Okay, it's. On the lot that they.
And they could do a short plot that meant the size requirements for a new lot.
And.
That's probably not the case. Yeah, it's, okay. I think it's just very interesting.
Yeah, it's, it's very, I, I thought that that was one of the big things when the legislation came out that I was supposing at the legislature. Let's to allow short plating or kind of minimization of like they're going along. Accessories to the unit if you're selling them off. So, but. It's still through the same units, condominium wise, ADUs and so on.
Do you feel like that's going to get messy in zones that aren't identity or even single family? Like if you have residential right now in an EP one or an EP two. And now you're kind of minimizing or short plating, it just seems like.
Well, it wouldn't go in the. Zone.
So we're not grandfathering in. If there's a house in a non, uh, single family or.
So, yeah, the language says specifically is it's allowed in zones that allow residential use, meaning all they. Then it exists. Uh, but it actually not. Some of them don't allow residential use. So you don't.
Alright. So we're not grandfathering that house.
Trying to convert to.
Got it. Maybe else for any comments or chat? We're not watching on this one.
Um, I did just have a question. It was, uh, section eighteen ten. Um, I just love some theory. So like, I think. Specify, but so you were to build. ADU and you also want to detach for us in a second. You could accomplish all of those in a second. Just, but you can have a branding. As long as it doesn't affect, uh, the seat that's. Okay, that's good. Plus, uh, just a part of the amendments to eighteen ten or four one are just to clean up. So you're only addressing ADUs in one section. Okay, so.
Yeah. Removing ADUs from eighteen ten four one. And leaving that in the other section.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, I think that's it. So we will move on to, and we're safe. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.